I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item C, the adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for the board's consideration, would ask that you add the following to J, New Business, and renumber previous five to six. Five would be consideration and approval of purchase of a propane bus. And also amend the agenda by moving New Business J-1 to follow item D approval of minutes.
I move that we adjust the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Approval of minutes from March 12, 2017 to 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes from the March 12, 2019, school board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
And this evening, we have as a presenter for you Ellsworth High School HCTC senior Riley Grindel.
Good evening. Happy to introduce Riley Grindel, who is an Ellsworth High School HCTC senior, bridge year student, who's participated in our biomedical program the last two years. Tonight, we wanted to honor him for becoming the first career and technical student to earn a medal at the Maine State Science Fair. Typically, medals are given to students from traditional high schools. And this year, he earned third place in the biomedical part of the science fair. And so, Mr. Higgins and I thought it would be great if he would talk to you a little bit about what he did for his project for the science fair and what science fair was like for him.
So, I've been doing an internship at the Jackson Lab for the past four or five months. And through HCTC and my teacher, Ms. Pritchard, we heard about the science fair. And I went to science fair last year. And I was told that science fair, they had tons of scholarship opportunities, tons of connections you can make with scientists from around Maine. So, I figured it'd be a good idea. And last year, I was on a team for science fair, and we did alright. But I was recommended that I do a science fair project by myself this year. So, I took that on at the Jackson Lab with my research mentor, Manir Hasham. And so, since about November or December, we've been doing a project. And it's actually one that, it's a continuation of one that he's already done. I was working with a molecule called 2DG. It's a drug. He recently published a paper on it as a chemotherapy, effective chemotherapy against lots of cancers and tumors that are rapidly dividing. Because you know how cancers, they rapidly proliferate in order to kind of infect the body. And so, 2DG, he published a paper on it as a chemotherapy for that. And my job was to test to see if it could affect your immune system. Because, as we all know, chemotherapies, they can be pretty nasty stuff. And it's not specific towards just the cancer. You know, it can spread to your immune system, kill off the immune system, which can leave you susceptible to infections, bacteria, viruses, which can ultimately kill you too. So, I started in November. It was like a month-long project. And we had four cohorts of mice that we were working with, just three in each group. And some were given 2DG, which we wanted to see how it affected the immune system. And then, some were given just absolutely nothing at all, so we could compare the two groups. And then, another was given an antigen to see how their immune system responded to the antigen. And then, some were just given 2DG to see how their immune system was affected by not even having an antigen in the body. So, we did a bunch, he taught me how to do a bunch of different tests on the mice. It's something that students of my age wouldn't learn at all in high school. And I was talking to research assistants there that they did tests that I was doing when they first got to Jax. You know, they didn't even learn it in college. So, it's a pretty neat experience. And I did this thing called flow cytometry on the mice. So, basically, you add enzymes and you add substrates into the mice. And the enzymes attach to the antibodies, which is what your immune system creates. So, that's what we use to measure the different amounts of antibodies created in each of the mice to compare them together. So, we, and it counts, so flow cytometry counts the cells. And we took the cells in the spleen where your immune system cells are stored. And we found out that 2DG does not affect your immune system cell response. So, that was good, you know, a chemotherapy that doesn't affect your cell response in your spleen. And then, we did another test called a rapid ELISA, which measures the amount of antibody produced. So, instead of counting cells this time, we're counting antibodies. And same result, 2DG doesn't affect your antibody response. So, ultimately, it's what we wanted. It showed that 2DG is a safe chemotherapy towards your immune system. And there was a bunch of statistics and stuff that he had to teach me behind it, because I don't take statistics in high school. I was like, what am I looking at? So, he helped me with that. And so, hopefully, the next step for this project, and I might be able to see it, I'm not sure yet, is to have it repeated on hundreds of mice to see if it shows the same consistency. So, yeah, it was a really good experience overall. So, yeah.
Make sure you put it on your resume one day.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Do you know what your plans are for the fall?
I'm going to be attending UMaine in molecular biology for hopefully three years. I haven't had that conversation with them yet, because through bridge year, I only have to attend for three years, so.
So, you'll be, so you'll go for three years, but then you'll be able to graduate?
Yes.
Yeah. You're not going to grad, you'll drop out after three years.
Hopefully not. And then, after that, who knows, I could end up working at the lab. I might go for my PhD. Bunch of different options.
Obviously, you enjoy this field.
Oh, immensely. Yeah, it's great.
So, what would you say to younger students who are considering going to HCTC and looking at, hoping to have a career in science or medicine and considering the biotech program there?
It's honestly the best decision you could ever make if you're, if you have any slight interest in it at all. You know, because my sophomore year, I was like, do I even like science? You know, why not? Just go for it. And it's been the best decision I've ever made. Because you make so many connections through that, and you learn so much. And it's such a broad field that you can get specialized in so many different things. So, and then, you've got these great opportunities like science fair, where you can get scholarships. And, you know, science fair offered $600,000 of scholarships this year, which is insane. They offered 12 full boats to UMaine, which, you know, I think it's great. I obviously, I didn't get one, but like, I know that there's some Ellsworth students that could definitely get one in the future. It'd be good to get some awareness for that.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Riley.
Item E, communications and correspondence.
There were three letters that I received, one of retirement, two of resignation, which I will cover in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Before we begin, I'd like to go over a few items here. Members of the public may speak on any subject directly related to the operations of the school, except for personnel matters or complaints concerning specific employees or students, which shall be addressed through the established policies and procedures. We're going to ask you to identify yourself once you start speaking, please. Speakers are not permitted to share gossip, make defamatory comments, or use vulgar or abusive language. No complaints or allegations will be allowed at school board meetings concerning any person employed by the school system or against particular students. Personnel matters or complaints concerning student or staff issues will not be considered in a public meeting, but will be referred through established policies and procedures. And in order to make efficient use of meeting time, the board discourages duplicity or repetition of comments to the board. And we're going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you.
I'll try to be as brief as possible. I've got one question. I was denied. I requested it in writing on March 20th, replaced on the agenda this month. And I was denied that request. I'm just wondering why? And I don't know that you can answer, because I know it's. I also have another request for next month. I could give that to Mr. Higgins, so that he can censor it or whatever he needs to do. I was denied the request on April 4th. I requested it on March 20th. And my question was, why was I denied? And it's surely evident that I have exhausted all venues, protocols, in order to, for such a request to have come before the school committee. Some information I'd like to share. The teachers in Ellsworth schools have done an excellent job with our children. We do entrust our children with them, and ultimately, you, for the majority of the weekdays. And we expect them to be treated kindly and to be protected while they are in a learning environment. And this is their right. My granddaughter filed five bullying complaints. Three were returned with wrong dates, wrong information, and one was duplicated three times. No signatures whatsoever, but they were all checked unsubstantiated. The superintendent says that unsubstantiated simply means they were taken care of or they were handled. And unsubstanti, and the English language is important here, because we know that unsubstantiated means unfounded, no evidence found, and unconfirmed. The Department of Education says that a school will receive more funding if there is a bullying problem in the school, not less, because they want it stopped. So, if you do not contact the DOE and let them know, the substantiated ones are reported to the DOE. If you mark them all unsubstantiated, you don't lose any funding. You lose funding when you don't report them to the Department of Education. So, if you have a bullying problem in your school, the Department of Education will give you more funding, because they don't want it to continue. My final thoughts concerning these things and many more. I'll make a request that the people in charge of our children during the day do not communicate to us in a condescending manner. That they treat us with respect, and at least try to seem genuinely concerned for our children when we do have a problem. It's not our job to write policy, and we make sure that it is followed. And make sure that it is followed. This is a responsibility that falls upon you as school board members. If we come to you with a problem, and we have followed all other protocol, then you need to know that it is because nothing has been done. And if you, as a school committee, cannot address and fix the problem, then you are part of the problem. Because after all, it is your job to take care of things.
My name is Rachel Hicks. I had several things I wanted to say, but I'm just going to say that I was given bullying reports from my daughter. None of them were signed. I had a meeting with Mr. Higgins, who informed me that he had not been informed of my daughter being called the N-word. That was a substant, did you say that? Yep. And, I, yep. And that was in March, that he, was the first time he'd heard of it. And it had happened in October. And the dates and the facts on the bullying report are inaccurate. They're not correct. So, my question is, we don't, I don't have a problem with policy. I have a problem with it not being followed. And if I don't know the procedures to go, to ask, or to report that these aren't being followed, how do I know, where do I find that information? How do I know who to talk to? If it's not you guys, who is, that I'm supposed to speak with? Because I had a meeting with Mr. Higgins, and he told me he was looking into things, and I've not heard back, so. My child is being homeschooled with a severe problem with ADHD, and it's not working for her. So, she's being denied her right to a public education, so.
Anyone else? Item G, Administrator Board Report.
Good evening. You have my report. I was going to have some students with me, but we didn't have school yesterday, so I didn't notify, I couldn't notify them yesterday to be here tonight. So, I'll bring them next month. But just to go over a few of the accomplishments, because music theater, March is their big, their big month with all their competitions. So, the results of that, and congratulations to all these students. Show choir, won a bronze rating. Jazz choir, a bronze rating. Jazz combo, a bronze rating. Jazz band, a bronze weight rating. And one act play finished third in all of Class B. And we hosted that competition for the first time this year. So, congratulations to all of them. Also, jobs remain graduates. This is the first year of the program, and we sent seven students down to their competition. And they had over 650 students from 65 schools. And we came back with four wins. And so, students are very excited. Teacher is very excited, and it's, the program is off to a great start. It really is. And probably, the numbers will double next year. And there are a lot of kids talking about jobs for main grads and excited about signing up for it next year. So, it's, it's been a great addition to our school. A couple of awards from our faculty and staff. Bev Homage, she received the John Parkman Service Award from the Maine Counseling Association that she received last week, and that was a surprise to her. And as some of you know, she's retiring after 40 years at Ellsworth High School, and she will badly be missed. But she's had a terrific career and a great way to send her off. And Spanish teacher Carrie Cutney won a scholarship to take a class in Spain this summer. And it was based on competition in two essays. And so, she's very fortunate, and we're proud of her to receive that scholarship. And you heard Riley Grindel, and, you know, just listening to Riley, it's amazing, you know, how far he's come in two years. And I think Mrs. Bowles and I and Gaiants remember, you know, he couldn't remember, he, he couldn't decide if he wanted to do the bridge program or not. And his parents really wanted him to. And he was pretty much against it. And we had, I don't know, three or four meetings with he and mom. And he was about probably 14 inches shorter then, two years ago. There was this little kid in this seat saying, I don't think I want to do it, and I don't know. And then, we're like, just give it a shot, and we'll see, and we'll pull you, you know, in a month. If, the first month of school, we'll try and see how it goes. And obviously, he's flourished, and we're very proud of him, and his parents should be. And, you know, it's, it's great to see that, that growth in two years. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Ms. Gabby Nellie?
Good evening. On April 24th, our seventh graders are going to be taking a trip to Cole's Transportation Museum, where they're going to get the opportunity to interview veterans. And the veterans will share their experience of military service with our seventh graders. So, I'm pretty excited for them to be able to experience that. It's going to be a pretty incredible field trip. MEAs are wrapping up this week, so we are pretty excited about that. And I want to thank all the teachers and students for working really hard during testing. It makes for long days for kids, and they, they really maintain their focus and do a good job. Our show choir gave an incredible performance at State's on March 29th, and they earned themselves a silver rating. It was awesome. Spring sports are underway. Trials were held last week and some this week because of the weather. And so, practices will be getting, will be beginning this weekend, right after vacation. Our first games again, maybe, if we can clear the snow out. In the wintertime, Ms. Johns had begun a coding club with fifth and sixth grade students, where they learned the structure of programming JavaScript, which really is a little bit beyond me, but she knows all about it and is very, very passionate about it, and has gotten our fifth and sixth graders very excited about learning about this coding. And they're currently working on using that knowledge that they gained with JavaScript to program robots. So, I'm hoping that maybe we can get them in here, and they can show you how they program their robots, because it's pretty neat. There was a PTF meeting this afternoon. The PTF fundraiser, their walkathon fundraiser is May 3rd, that's coming right up. And because our volunteer training was postponed last week due to weather, Mrs. Lewis and I are going to come up with a new date for that. So, stay tuned for that. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Ms. Lewis?
First of all, Riley, I remember when it was a great science fair project, when I did the poster of Katahdin Mountain and talked about the elevations. What you've done in the last six months has superseded what a lot of people do over years of their education. Congratulations. And it's great that you had parent support, because the most important, Ms. Gabby Nellie, we were talking about this earlier today. The most important aspect of any child's growth is the parent's support and the way in which they help them to grow and learn. And even once in a while, when they're not sure they want to do something. But I think it's amazing, you can go right from HCTC to the University of Maine, or Harvard, or MIT, or anywhere else you want to go. So, congratulations. But I'm sitting back there thinking, I'm not sure what I want to be when I grow up, but I know I've got to go back to HCTC to figure it out. Congratulations. My report mirrors a lot of what Mrs. Gabby Nellie said in terms of MEAs. We're finishing those up. But I think something that sometimes goes unsaid, but certainly is thought of all the time, is our appreciation to the IT department. Without whom, none of your testing would happen. And a lot of our kids wouldn't be going in the same kinds of directions that Riley's going in. So, I need to publicly thank IT and April Clifford for all the work that they do. From the beginning, where people have to watch a video to make sure they're trained to be proctors and administrators and all that sort of thing, right to the end, and in the middle, are all the things that can go wrong. And only they know how to fix them. So, I appreciate that, and I speak for the entire school department. Thank you very much. I don't know how the number of people that they have in that department ever get everything done that they do. It's just amazing. As you know, my reports usually center on climate, school climate. And we've had some bumps in the last couple of months. And I would say to you that we have staff members who support each other and our students through all of those bumps. I look at curriculum, and Rachel does a great job getting us organized with curriculum. And we try to share that with parents, but we are talking more and more lately of the need to help parents come to understand not only the standards that their children are learning, but ways in which they can help them. And so, as we look forward to next year, we take a look at what are some of the things that we could do to help parents with that. In terms of community, I included in this report, oh, somebody's calling. I can dance. Oh, I told Lumen I would. Community is the third prong of all of my reports. And I included in that just a sample of what goes on at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School. And this is not the busiest day we have, but you can see that we are a center for the community, not just for school activities, but for other organizations that utilize our facilities. So, when taxpayers are taking pride in their schools, they can be taking pride in the way the entire community benefits from our facilities. Six o'clock is always showtime for our concerts, and it's so much fun every time. And it's a different grade level every time. And every time you watch all those people come in, people are sometimes late. And I'll include myself in that for things. Are usually there 45 minutes early to get the right seats and the right position for the cameras. And the kids are so excited. And I think all of us want that sort of excitement happening in our schools, not just about concerts and sports, but about academics in general. And that is certainly something that we work towards. A reminder that next month, our Momentum Leadership Team and their little helpers will be at the board meeting. So, Dan's bringing big people, I'm bringing little people. And as you may remember, you're all invited to join in classroom observation. Actually, it'll be more interactive than an observation. And you will get that invitation in terms of a Google Doc, probably coming out next week or the week after. And you can sign up if you are available, and if you are so inclined to go visit in classrooms and see what that literacy technology bond has developed into over the last three years. It's fascinating. And not all the invitations were ready tonight. But Mr. Higgins and our lovely board chair, Ms. Thomas, have invitations from children. And Brenda, can you hold yours up? All right. Oh, good. There you go. I can do it. Dear Mr. Higgins, it also is addressed to board members through there. Please come visit our classroom to see how technology is integrated into our learning. And then, as if that isn't enough, please scan this QR code to watch a video of students inviting you. And these are legitimate scan codes, so those will work. Anybody who didn't get it tonight will get theirs in the mail a little later on. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. But at any rate, it's joyful to see Riley and the cohorts that come through from the high school and our middle school kids and our little ones. Those were written by first graders, second graders, third graders. And we are blessed, not only to have them and their parents, but to have the support that this school district has for education. So, thank you. Any questions? Always forget to ask them. Okay, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mrs. Bowles?
My staff and two of my, myself and two of my teachers were happy to attend Melmac University's Professional Development Days at the SAMSET a couple of weeks ago. This was probably one of the better Melmac Professional Development opportunities that I've been to, because it was so relevant to what we're doing in CTE right now. The breakout sessions were fabulous. It was all about CTEs collaborating with JMG programs at high schools. It was about CTE in middle schools. There were sessions on the teenage brain, and how research shows that there's so many new things to learn about teenagers and the way their brains work to maximize learning in the classrooms. It was really, really great. So, Mr. Bellagio, and Mr. Anderson, and myself are planning to meet over the next few weeks to kind of talk about what specific things do we think best fit our district and school's mission moving forward to try to put some action steps in place based on our learning. So, that was really great. I'm happy to report, we had a really great session. More and more CTEs are being asked to educate students about career opportunities in Maine. As you know, Maine has a huge workforce crisis currently. That's only going to get larger over the next decade as our population ages. So, really, one of our tasks that we've been given is to really try to educate students and families more about the opportunities that they could have coming back to the state of Maine after post-secondary or right after high school. So, Bath Iron Works came to HCTC last Thursday, and it was probably one of the best things we've ever hosted at HCTC. They came with four different people from different departments. And all of our students attended an hour session in the morning and in the afternoon. And an hour, I was nervous. That's a long time to listen and sit and get. And they were captured the whole time. They had no idea what Bath Iron Works was or did. They had no idea that they employ nurses, culinary workers, engineers, welders. So, every program was represented. They talked to them about different opportunities they could have for careers right out of high school and/or after they go to school and go to post-secondary. And they talked to them how the benefits they have by working at a main company, and how they could help them further their education and supplement their tuition. So, that was really great for kids to see something completely different. And they stayed over the lunch break, when my teachers have their prep, and met with my staff to learn more about what are each of our programs entail. So, that was really, a really powerful thing. And we're hoping that we can host more and more companies in different fields over the next couple of years as we try to expand that. Our students returned from their Boston-Melmac trip, and it was very successful. It's the first time HCTC has done a trip of that magnitude. And, you know, like you always hear when we report back, probably some of the most memorable things was kids being amazed by just the sheer size of Boston, because most of our kids that went had never been. So, that was exciting, and getting on and off the T amazed them. So, not only did they have those educational opportunities of seeing colleges that fit their three specific pathways, it was media, biomedical, and early childhood, but just the life experience that they got in those two days was much a- the life experience that they got in those two days was much appreciated that you allowed that. We had our spring middle school camp this past Saturday. We had over 60 kids, it's our highest spring numbers I think we've had. Usually our fall is around that number and our spring drops off a little bit and this one was very high. This is the first time we provided busing from RSU 25 and RSU 24. RSU 25 students didn't take advantage of it, but RSU 24 did. About 10 kids got on the bus at Sumner High School. And that was definitely something that students said if they had not had, their families would not have been able to attend. So looking at that moving forward, that's definitely, if the state continues to do middle school funding for CTE, that's definitely a piece of that that we'll continue to provide. Finally, enrollment, we're still plugging away, I have about 20 more applications to go, trying to weed through all the applications that have come in for enrollment for the fall. And we're hoping to mail those decisions out for HCTC enrollment during or right after April vacation and then bridge year will be shortly soon thereafter that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Ms. Coleman-Ramone?
Good evening. Tonight I'm here to talk about one of the grants that is funded Title IV, it's a federal source of funding that I helped to manage. And I thought that since I present this in the fall about the grant that we've put together, that each one of these meetings I try to help highlight some of the things that we do with the federal funding so that, that the community can know about some of the really wonderful programs that we have running in the school. This is a relatively new federal grant that supports three types of projects that are aimed at the following goals: well-rounded education, the safety and health of our students, and effective use of technology. To support teachers in these categories, Title IV has funded several projects. One was to provide equipment and supplies to the eighth grade science department who moved to a standards-aligned STEM scopes curriculum that aligns with the curriculum in grade K through five and grade seven. And this is also a curriculum that supports student learning and skills necessary to be prepared for high school physical science. This grant also supported workshops by Jen Stansfield, a practitioner of experiential education and team building, who worked with all teachers grade K through 12, including HCTC, to develop strategies in the classroom that promote group learning and positive discussion. This grant also funds the work that the Ellsworth Schools do in partnership with the Grand Theater. This program has grown to provide opportunities to all grades K through 12 by which the arts outreach educator from the Grand, Nicole Cardano, collaborates with teachers to offer theater workshops that tie the classroom curriculum to the show that most students will attend. This week, Ms. Cardano is doing some really important special work. She's working with 220 high school students and 110 eighth graders to explore the human experience during World War II in Europe with the Nazi invasion. The EHS students will participate in these workshops as a preceding activity to attend the presentation of a Holocaust survivor at the school on Friday. They will then attend a performance of Little Bits of Light at the Grand on April 26. This show is an adaptation of I Never Saw Another Butterfly about Jewish children's experiences at Tarasen, one of the concentration camps. The program was designed to give our students real-time experiences in empathy and compassion through dramatic participation and presentation. The Title IV grant has also supported the development of two programs at the high school. One is a new mentoring program where teachers are paired with students who can benefit by one-on-one academic and interpersonal support. This program includes summer training for participating teachers, T-shirts, and funds for field trips. Also, a new peer coaching program has been started, building on the foundation of a program run several years ago. Ten teachers have participated in statewide professional development in coaching and collective efficacy and have worked together to create a supportive network where teachers can receive the support they need to be the most effective and responsive teachers possible for their students. Finally, the Title IV grant supports our fifth and sixth grade robotics program that I described in our previous meeting and Ms. Gabbi and Ellie just discussed today. At a community meeting last year, many community members discussed the need for a variety of programs, including and in addition to established athletic programs that would appeal to students with a variety of interests, so as to encourage participation and team building and prevent feelings of isolation for any student. This coding program has reached many students who are interested in gaming and game design, engineering, science, and math. We are very excited about the next phase of the program that Ms. Gabbi and Ellie has described and the opportunities that it provides for a new group of students. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. I'll start my report this evening by giving an update on storm days. If you remember, last month at this time, we talked about what would happen if we had another storm day and that if we did have another storm day, we would likely be considering having students attend school on a Saturday or by using five early dismissal days and making them full student days. At the time we did that report, we were kind of hoping we would not have any more storm days. So I'm kind of hesitant to even talk about it tonight because the forecast for tomorrow morning is not all that pleasant, but I will anyway. So we did have a cancellation yesterday, which means that we have a school day that we need to make up. As we talked about last month, if we just add on to the end of the year, our students in grades pre-K through grade 11 will end up going to school on Monday, June 24th. None of us think that's a good idea and I've talked with our administrators, many of whom are here tonight, and asked them if they preferred a Saturday or adding an hour a day for each of five Fridays. Their position was adding an hour for each of the Fridays. And I think that's probably the direction we're going to go. We do want to make sure we meet and consult with our teachers association, so we will do that. But just to give parents a heads up, the most likely outcome will be that we will have five Fridays that will be full school days and not early release days. And if we go in that direction, those Fridays will be April 26th, May 3rd, May 10th, May 17th, and May 24th. Again, we'll flesh that out this week and make sure that we're all on the same page with that and we'll send communication out to the board and also to our families. Let's like to announce a new staff member that we hired since our last meeting. Jennifer Trobridge will be serving as an EdTech III at EEMS in Special Education. And talk about the letters that we received. We have two letters of resignation, one custodian at EEMS, Holly Hitchcock. Second one, Director of Special Education for the School Department, Lynn Maddox, been serving in that position for 15 years. And as Mr. Clifford mentioned earlier, Bev Homich, who started at Ellsworth High School in 1979, has decided to retire. She certainly has served our community and our students very well over that 40 years. I'd like to conclude my report this evening by spending a little bit of time talking about the Ellsworth School Department vision and mission, school climate and environment, and how we as a school system respond to reports or observations of bullying behaviors. The first part I'd like to talk about is the School Department vision and the pieces of that that directly connect to bullying and how we deal with bullying behaviors. One of the major components of our vision statement is, and I quote, "Our students actively engage in a variety of highly relevant and meaningful learning experiences that prepare them for a successful and dynamic future." Included as bulleted items under that, "We are respectful of all school community members, we are clear and effective communicators, and we learn in a physically, emotionally, and socially safe and nurturing environment." I think you heard Mrs. Lewis talk about that in her report. Another major component of our vision statement, and I quote, "Our school and community embrace the shared responsibility and commitment for educating our students." Bulleted items under that particular item are, "We value professional, skilled, caring, and compassionate school members, and we value the partnership between school and community in providing relevant learning experiences." End quote. And those learning experiences, by the way, extend beyond academics. As you know, the climate and culture of our schools plays a critical role in the ability of our students to achieve academically and in co- and extracurricular pursuits. A major part of our culture focuses on the expectation that all members of the organization will be respectful and considerate of others and tolerant of individuality and choices. Each of our schools has in its handbooks behavioral expectations as outlined in our School Department policy JIC, which is the Student Code of Conduct. This policy outlines appropriate and expected behaviors and provides all students and staff members with guidelines for interactions with others. Additionally, each of our schools has a PBIS program. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. While stressing similar behavioral characteristics and expectations across the grade spans, the structure of the PBIS programs varies from school to school to accommodate age and developmental levels. All of our schools have in place a behavior matrix for students and staff. EES has its six simple words which you see emblazoned along the hallways of the school along with a six simple words poem. EMS distributes Falcon cards in recognition of positive student behaviors. In addition to those clear expectations and a PBIS program, we also have members of our professional and support staff whose responsibilities require them to focus on appropriate student relationships through their work, either through direct classroom lessons or individual and group work with students. Those staff members include our social workers, our health teachers, our school nurses, and our guidance staff. And in addition to that, many, many other staff members on a less formal basis. But I can assure you, all of our staff members care about kids and work each and every day to support their efforts to be successful. Unfortunately, even with all these proactive programs and components in place, there are and will continue to be occasions where students do not get along with each other or have issues with and between each other where their behaviors are not consistent with behaviors that are expected and accepted in our schools. Often those inappropriate behaviors manifest themselves in behaviors that constitute peer conflict or bullying and harassment. Regardless of whether or not the inappropriate behaviors are ultimately determined to be a substantiated case of bullying, our staff responds to these behaviors if they are either observed or if they are reported, and our staff takes steps to address the issues. This is done not just through best practices and a requirement of our policies, but most importantly, because it's the right thing to do. You know, when you hear our administrators talk, they talk about what's the right thing to do. And I think of Kathy Lewis, she's always talking about kids and how much our staff cares for them. The term that's most often applied to these instances of student misbehavior is bullying. As we all know, bullying is a widespread term, has wide application. Because that word arises regularly, I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss bullying, our policies and practices regarding bullying, and how our staff works with students and families to address reported, excuse me, to address instances of reported bullying or other appropriate behaviors that are not classified as bullying. Ellsworth School Department has in place policy JICK, which is Bullying and Cyberbullying Prevention in Schools. For those of you out there watching on television, you can find that on our website. Policy JICK, which was included in student handbooks that are distributed at the beginning of the school year and is on our website, guides our school community in addressing the issue of bullying. Its intent is consistent with the school's vision in that the board strives to, and I quote this out of the policy, quote, "Provide a safe, orderly, and respectful environment that is conducive to teaching and learning." Our policy is based upon Maine State law and is one of two versions that was developed specifically for schools in response to that law. One was developed by the Maine Department of Education, the other by Drummond-Woodsom, who was the preeminent education law firm in Maine and New Hampshire. You as a board adopted the Drummond-Woodsom version and it has served us well. The policy includes the following sections: there is a stated intent of the policy, there are definitions of bullying, cyberbullying, and prohibited behaviors, there's an identification of where and for whom the policy is applicable, there are guidelines included in the policy for reporting, responding to, and remediating behaviors in violation of the policy, and there is a formal appeals process. And it's unfortunate, I don't think a lot of people are aware that there is an appeals process. But the appeals process allows parents to appeal decisions made by principals or the superintendent's designee, and by the way, in our bullying policy, the principals are the superintendent's designee. They can appeal decisions made by the principals in taking or not taking remedial action in accord with the policy. Okay? It's very straightforward. It's a simple matter of taking the information you have, contacting the superintendent either by phone call, by email, or in writing. With regard to our efforts, our staff is trained annually in bullying prevention, which is a requirement. That training also includes a review of our School Department policy. Our responsibility under the policy is reporting to appropriate parties any alleged or suspected instances of bullying behaviors or receiving the same reports from a student or a parent or even an anonymous source. And I would let people know, if you don't know, our website has a link on each of our school sites, a tab where you can click and report bullying anonymously, and it will get sent to the appropriate school administrator. When we receive reports or observe behaviors in our schools, staff in our schools respond in accord with the policy. We respond to the report or observation of allegations of bullying behaviors by initiating an investigation into the allegations. When the investigation is completed, we make a determination of whether or not the incident was a substantiated case of bullying. And I think it's important to talk specifically about what that means. In the policy, there is a definition of what bullying is. If the investigation finds that the behaviors that were alleged meet that definition, that's classified as a substantiated case of bullying and there are steps that we follow. In many investigations, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, what's alleged does not rise to the level of being defined as a substantiated case of bullying. Mrs. Clark, who was here earlier, is accurate. Those items that are not substantiated do not get reported to the Department of Education. However, it's important for people to know, just because it's not a substantiated case of bullying as defined by the policy, it may still be a misbehavior or violation of other policy. We still act upon that and address and remediate the behaviors. Okay? And I'll restate that. If the alleged incident is determined to be a substantiated instance of bullying, we follow policy JICK to remediate the behaviors. Policy JICK provides a wide range of remedies that can be used. If the alleged incident is determined not to be a substantiated case of bullying, but to be a case of behavior that's inconsistent with our behavioral expectations or in violation of another policy, we revert to policy JIC, which is our Student Code of Conduct, and we implement appropriate remedial measures or disciplinary measures to address the inappropriate behavior. So again, very clearly, whether it's defined as bullying or not, if it's inappropriate and a violation of policy, we address it and deal with it. It's also important to know that regardless of whether or not the report is substantiated through the investigation as a case of bullying by the definition in the policy, if the behaviors are inappropriate or a violation of policy or behavioral expectations, our task and objective is to take and implement appropriate remediation, behavior modification, or disciplinary consequences in an effort to modify the behavior. And equally as important, to educate our students on what appropriate behavior is and reinforce what those appropriate behaviors are. Now, based on conversations that I've had with parents, grandparents, and other community members, it's apparent that there is a great deal of confusion, misinformation, and misstatements about bullying and how it is handled in our schools. So I'd like to follow up on that by just talking about some important things for people to know about the process of how we deal with bullying, from the initial report or observation to the resolution. And hopefully that will clear up any confusion or misinformation. First, we're talking about reports or observations. In order for school staff to do something about an allegation of bullying or misbehaviors, it either needs to be reported by someone or it needs to be observed by school staff. Okay? If we do not have information on it, we're not able to do anything about it. With regard to investigations, there's a belief out there that investigations are most often very straightforward, open and shut. And I want to talk a little bit about a straightforward investigation and a complex investigation. When a report is made, there is often an assumption that the investigation will be straightforward and completed immediately. There's an allegation of one student against another student, you investigate it, you find out that it happened, end of story. That does happen on some occasions. Sometimes it is that clear cut. However, on many occasions, what starts out as a single allegation of bullying of one student against another evolves into multiple layers and multiple students who are involved as either participants or witnesses. Oftentimes, in addition to the initial allegation, there are counter allegations. One student says they were bullied by another student, a counter allegation comes back the other way. When those things happen, it becomes much more complex and our administrators have to follow through and conduct interviews with the alleged victim, alleged perpetrator, and if there is a counterclaim, the reverse, and also any witnesses who may have seen or observed what happened. In many instances, students have to be interviewed multiple times. We ask for parents and community members patience and understanding while the investigation takes place, particularly when it's this complex. We ask for parents and community members patience and understanding while the investigation takes place, particularly when it's this complex. Again, there are often multiple parties and potential witnesses. We also ask parents and community members to have an understanding and belief in the process. Unfortunately, as we work through the process, because of confidentiality, there will be some parts of the investigations and findings that cannot be communicated to all parents who will be receiving information. We need to ensure that our findings are also based upon evidence that we obtained through the investigation so that the remediation and resolution are appropriate. I talked about this before, but substantiated or not. Again, just to reiterate that, state law and our policy includes a definition of what constitutes bullying behavior. With some reported allegations, the alleged behavior meets the standard for bullying. However, in many cases, it does not. When taking remedial action in substantiated case of bullying, while we inform the parent of both students that the issue has been addressed and action has been taken, confidentiality prevents us from telling the parent of one child what consequence or action may have been assigned to the child of another parent. Also, just because an allegation is not determined to be a substantiated case of bullying by law and the policy does not mean the school has not done anything about the issue. We take remedial or disciplinary action for violations of any of our policies or rules, even if they do not rise to the level of bullying as defined. With regard to resolution or resolving the issue, ultimately, we're dealing with our students, and our goals are not only to address misbehaviors by remediating the behaviors, whether they're substantiated or not, but to continue to educate our students on and reinforce what are appropriate and acceptable behaviors. Yes, the remediation is highly important, and if it involves discipline, that's important as well. But it's equally as important that we continue to teach and reinforce for our students what are appropriate and acceptable behaviors. With regard to the resolution, depending upon the level of the offense, remediation may not take the form of traditional discipline. When I say traditional discipline, we're often talking about a warning or detention or a suspension. But there may be other alternative measures that are implemented. One of the best examples of that, again, when you think of the example I gave earlier where students are not getting along, okay, whether it's bullying or not, one of the strategies that's been used and tried and tested in schools and has been successful is school staff working with two or more of those students to help them get along. Give them the skills and strategies to get along and address their differences. Or at the very least, learn how to treat each other with respect even if they're not able to get along. But the bottom line for us in schools is this when we're dealing with bullying allegations. We need and want the inappropriate behavior to stop, to cease. We also want our students to learn from the situation. Another important component to how we deal with bullying is communication. If you look at our policy, once an allegation has been made, I've already talked about how our school administrators are required to follow up and conduct an investigation. As they move through that investigation and come to their findings, they're required to communicate with the parents of the alleged victim and the alleged perpetrator to notify them that an allegation has been made, that an investigation's been conducted, and that there are findings from the investigation. I take this opportunity to remind people that when you get to the point where there are findings and there may be disciplinary consequences, confidentiality prevents us from providing specific consequences or measures taken against the child of another parent. Another piece that I think is important for the members of our public to know is what is the impact of social media on bullying? And our policy is entitled Prevention of Bullying and Cyberbullying. With regard to social media, one of the questions that often comes up is when and where is the policy applicable when you're dealing with social media? And there's a fine line with this. Oftentimes with social media, it doesn't take place through the use of school-provided equipment, and it doesn't take place during school or on school grounds. Based on that particular set of characteristics, the school has no jurisdiction over it. However, if there is a direct connection to school operations or the welfare of students or staff, depending upon what the message is, if say, for example, one student threatens to beat up another student at school the next day, we do have the ability to take that information and apply it under either the bullying policy or other policies. I think another thing that's important for people to understand is that not only can bullying be initiated over social media, it can also be perpetuated over social media. Now, I'm probably going to date myself, and some of you may remember this, but back in the olden days, if you had a couple of kids at school, a couple of friends at school who got into an argument towards the end of the school week, maybe a highly verbal argument, maybe even a fight, they go home on a Friday, they're home on the weekend, they don't see each other, they don't talk to each other because they're not in the same neighborhoods. They come back to school on Monday, and for the most part, they were friends before, it's all forgotten. Unfortunately, in today's society, with social media, those types of incidents that happen during school towards the end of a week carry over over the course of a weekend, sometimes into the wee hours of the morning. So it continues. And the message to give there is, you know, with our school equipment, we're able to track and monitor what types of things students are doing on school-provided equipment. So if there are indicators that they're using inappropriate language or using threatening language, we'll know about it. I encourage parents to make sure that you know what your sons and daughters are doing on social media. Now, to successfully address and reduce bullying behaviors, our belief is that it must be a community effort. It needs to involve the school. It needs to involve students, and it needs to involve parents and the community. The school role is simple, and I've just talked at length about it. We need to educate our students about appropriate, expected, and accepted behaviors, and we need to reinforce those. We also need to take our policies and follow up on any allegations that are brought forth to us or that we observe so that we can reach a successful resolution on our allegations. And those successful resolutions are addressing the behavior and making sure our students learn from it. Students can also play a role in addressing bullying. First and foremost, if we have any students who feel that they have been bullied or harassed by another student, or one of their friends is being bullied or harassed by another student, please report it to an adult. Whether that be somebody that you have as a teacher at school, another school staff member that you have a high level of trust in, or your parent, please report it. As I've said before, we can only respond if we're made aware of it. As school people and as educators, we do understand the concept that students often say, "If I report it, it's going to get worse," and that's certainly a valid feeling for students to have. However, I would just reiterate, the only way that we can do something about it is if we're made aware of it. And we will take steps to make sure that it doesn't get worse if it's happening. The piece that we can ask students to do is do not automatically conclude that nothing has been done about my report. As I said multiple times through this presentation, confidentiality prevents us from providing specific information about what has been done about an allegation and a finding of bullying. But one of the pieces that students can ask themselves is, "Has the behavior that was being done against me stopped? Has it ceased?" If it has, that's strong evidence that the concern has been properly addressed by school staff. Parents and community can also play a strong role in addressing bullying. Just as we say with students, parents, you can report to a school staff member if you observe a student being bullied, observe your child being bullied, or are told by your child that they are being bullied. If your child tells you about being bullied at school but does not want you to report it, please have a conversation with your child. Again, we can't do anything about it unless we know. One of the most difficult things for us to hear as educators is that a student has been bullied for a long period of time during the school year. When we finally hear about it, we find out that it's been taking place for four or five months, but we also learn that it's never been reported. So again, I urge you, please make sure that you report it. And again, on our website, we have an anonymous bullying link. Another thing, and I've had this conversation with parents recently, many times these types of behaviors occur between students who either were or are friends. Something happens to disrupt that friendship. Over my years in the business and also recently, many of these situations have been resolved simply by parents of the students communicating with each other and trying to work out what's going on. One of the reasons for that is sometimes the behaviors that are allegedly taking place in school may be taking place outside of school. But it's also a consistent message. If we can deal with it in the school, parents can deal with it with other parents. Most often, that addresses the situation and the behavior stops. The other piece that I would say to parents is also, don't automatically conclude that nothing has been done about it. Just because you have not been told by one of our administrators what the consequence is that's been assigned to someone else. Please understand, that's confidential information. But I would ask the same question, has the behavior that you reported or your child reported stopped? If it has, that's great evidence that the concern has been addressed. If you still have questions about it, however, as a parent, a question about the decision made by building-level administrators, give them a call. If you're still not satisfied after that, there's an appeals process in policy J I C K. So in closing, it's critical that we as educators, parents, and citizens demonstrate for our students and children healthy communication as we address and positively resolve issues such as allegations of bullying. We need to be positive role models for our students in the types of behaviors, actions, and communications that are constructive and serve a positive purpose towards a positive conclusion. It's also important for parents and community members to know that our staff is made up of people who are not only dedicated professionals, who are experts in their craft, but are people who truly care about the best interest of kids. In my 30-plus years in education, the last 21 as a building or district-level administrator, I've had the pleasure of working with and supervising many outstanding educators and educational leaders. I've publicly praised our entire ESD staff on many occasions and will continue to do so because they have earned it. What I'd like to do tonight is specifically point out a smaller subset of that group. I'd like to publicly recognize the Elsworth School Department administrators as one of the best groups I've ever worked with. In addition to the professional experience and qualities they bring to the table, the most important and visible attribute they bring is the way that they care about their students and support their students. Our community is very fortunate to have them serving our kids. Be it bullying or any other issue in our schools, our administrators are committed to the ESD vision and the best interests of our kids. And I'd like to close my report by reiterating another piece out of the vision. And again, I'll quote, "Our school and community embrace the shared responsibility and commitment for educating our students. We value the partnership between school and community in providing relevant learning experiences in preparing students for bright and dynamic futures." And that concludes my report unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Item H, committee reports. Policy committee has not had necessarily been met at this time. Leadership's met a couple of times this month, and I believe we, I believe finance has met since last month also. Continue to work on budget.
Personnel has nothing to report at this time. Facilities and transportation will be coming up later in this meeting.
Thank you. Old business, we have none. New business? I believe we did our staff presentation.
We did our staff presentation, and it was a student, although someday he's going to be a staff member somewhere.
J two, discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-state travel. And this is for the Elsworth High School senior class trip to Portland and Massachusetts.
Mr. Clifford, would you like to present that? Would you like to present that, Mr. Clifford?
Sure. Yeah, so this is a group that, they want to go to the Six Flags. And if you remember, two years ago, or last year was the first year we went with a senior class trip instead of the Kemfree night. And the reason why is Kemfree was the night of graduation and feedback from parents and students because we had a lack of participation. And the reason for that is a lot of family come for graduation, and graduates wanted to stay with their families, and you know, that was the biggest reason why. So last year was the first year that we, a couple of weeks before graduation, we had offered a senior class trip, and our numbers nearly doubled. And so that told us that that was a better time for our graduates. And this year, they want to go out of state to Six Flags. And it would be just one night, one overnighter, and then back the next day. So something that they're really looking forward to, and like I said before, this is the reason for the timing of the trip and the reason for the trip. So this senior class trip is in place of the Kemfree night or grad night. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm, yes, I have a question. They're going, whatever they're going to do, they're going to do until a certain amount of time, and then they're going to travel?
Yeah, I'm not really sure either, looking at the timeline.
Yeah, I wasn't sure of the timeline either. Leaving at 5:30 and then bowling at 8:30, and bowl from 9:00 to 11:00. And then they're going to leave Portland at 11:30 and hit the road, so it'll be overnight on a bus?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. All right.
And they're going to arrive around 6:00 or 7:00, get breakfast, and wait until the Six Flags opens.
And after the day at Six Flags, they'll be headed home, so it won't be any motel or anything.
Right. Just one overnight, but no hotel.
Okay, thank you.
How many buses and how many bus drivers?
Depends on how many kids sign up.
Where are we at with funding for this, Mr. Clifford?
Uh, I can get back to you on that. I'm not sure how much the senior class has right now.
But I'm sure that there's something in place for everyone who wants to go in need, whenever it will be made available.
And they wouldn't plan anything like this if they didn't have more than half the time. So I know that they have enough to pay for it. Exactly how much they have right this second, I don't know.
I make a motion that we approve the overnight senior class trip to Portland and Six Flags, Massachusetts.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you. And Hancock County Technical Center Skills USA trip to Kentucky. Yes.
Didn't you just go there last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, and the year before that?
This is the last year in Kentucky.
Oh, wow.
Works to Atlanta, Georgia next year, so this is it for Louisville. As you could see, I attached the Skills USA Maine. Every state does their own contract with the city. So our students would be leaving on Sunday, June 23rd. We've worked with a travel agent to get all 21 of us on the same plane because the state of Maine did not charter a plane this year. So we have worked with a travel agent to put us all on the same flight rather than staff having to split up and conquer. And you'll see that it's a very full agenda for kids, and we fly back on Saturday, June 30th. We're looking right now at 21 people.
Including staff.
That includes our staff members. Yes, that includes staff. So every single student has their coach going, with the exception of one. One student would be traveling with another female staff member because Mrs. Cody's son graduates this year. So a lot of her family is coming this year. So her student will travel with another female staff member and be coached by her who's already going. So we have ample male and female chaperones for the week.
Not that this pertains directly to the trip, but just so the listening audience knows, am I correct in saying these staff members are all donating their time to go with these students, correct?
Correct. Correct. They give up a week to go to coach their kids. There is a clause in the Elsworth School Department contract that when they work overnight, they are entitled to $100 stipend. So our Skills USA advisors typically do not get that. They consider that part of their job. But the other teachers who go get $100 a day for going. To be clear, yes, they do get that, but they're giving up a week of their summer. Absolutely. It is a drop in the bucket, but it is something, and they're appreciative of that, but that's a clause in their contract. They do appreciate that. Because it used to be they didn't get that at all. So that is appreciated.
I make a motion that we approve the trip to Kentucky for the Skills USA competition.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
So Riley is super excited because he's also going to Nationals and is going now to Six Flags on the senior class.
Wow, nice. Well, congratulations to all the students at HCTC who get to go to Skills and...
And don't forget to set up the link to the awards ceremony. And don't forget to set up the link to the awards ceremony. Some of us really enjoy watching that.
We love. Thank you.
The second read and approval of the 2019-20 Ellsworth School Department calendar.
There were no changes since the last month, at least with our calendar. I think I reported last month that through old Hancock County, because we have a state requirement that we have a common calendar for all the schools that send students to H C T C, there was one school that was out of date by one. That school system has decided to make a change, so our calendars will all be consistent and will meet the five-day decimal limit. So this is the same as what you saw last month, recommending no changes.
Make a motion to approve second read and adopt the 2019-20 Ellsworth School Department calendar as presented.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
J four, discussion and consideration of administrator contracts.
I believe you had in your packets a listing of administrators and the recommendations for amendments to their contracts. You heard my comments during my presentation of what I think of the quality of our administrators. But yes, would recommend each of those listed for increase of 3% in their contract and extend their contracts by one year.
Make a motion to approve administrator contract in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Consideration and approval of the purchase of a propane bus.
The Facilities Transportation Committee met earlier today with Business Manager Carolyn Heller and Transportation Director Don Saunders. They listened to a presentation and a recommendation for the purchase of a propane-powered school bus. This is the bus that we talked about earlier in the year for which Mr. Saunders and Mrs. Heller submitted a grant application, the Volkswagen Settlement Fund, that was a successful application. This is a bus that comes with a value of $105,600. The grant would cover $78,120 of it, meaning the school department's share would be $27,480. After carefully looking at our budget, where we fall at this time of year, the recommendation we made to the Facilities Transportation Committee was to approve that purchase out of the existing F Y 19 budget. We have funds in place to cover the purchase, and it would also allow us not to put funds in next year's budget for the purchase of that bus. And I know Mr. Marcosi and Mrs. Miller serve on that committee, if you want to add anything to that.
Makes our buses very green.
Yep. Mr. Saunders talked about some of the advantages of having a propane-powered bus versus diesel in terms of fuel economy and maintenance, other costs. Also, we're having, we have an opportunity to purchase a bus that costs $105,000. For our local contribution will be around $27,000, so seems like a good opportunity that we should not pass up.
I would agree.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the propane bus as presented and recommended by the Transportation and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? J six, budget update.
Just a quick budget update. As you all know, and I think you got in your folders, did you get a copy of the most recent iteration of the expenditure side of the budget? And I also believe you were sent an overview. Just to cover that quickly, the expenditure side of the budget, when we first started this process, you know, was in a double-digit percentage increase. And as we knew back at that point in time, that wasn't going to be the final budget that was presented to the board, to the council, and ultimately to the voters. And the budget you have in front of you in its current iteration is not going to be the one that's ultimately presented. But just some changes from the last workshop that you had where you talked about this. Under the regular instruction lines, in looking at our priorities, we've eliminated several positions from the draft budget. One is a grade-one teacher because of the enrollment level, and two of the positions were the math-interventionist positions at the elementary and the high school level. While those are important priorities when we look at some of the other priorities in the budget, specifically dealing with the need to supplement our work with 504 caseloads, dealing with student behavioral and mental health issues, those positions, even though they're important, unfortunately don't rise to the priority level of maintaining in the budget. One thing that we did add to the budget since the last time you met was an ed tech three for English-language learners. That caseload has increased over the past several years. We're at the point where we have one full-time teacher. It's too much for one full-time teacher to manage. Under special instruction, when we last met, the budget did not include any new ed tech positions, and we had said to you, we have a number of incoming students who are going to require needs. We have added for this draft of the budget, five new special ed ed techs, ed tech threes, and all of them will be placed at E E M S. With regard to facilities and maintenance, we've made some significant reductions, again, looking at priorities. At H C T C, we have removed from the budget draft the parking lot resurface and extension project, and also the early childhood playground. We've also eliminated, again, under priority, at Ellsworth High School, a V P A storage building, the small art room window project, and the portion of the Delu stadium lighting project that would require purchases of new equipment. We've maintained $100,000 in the lines for now because of some of the repair and update work that will need to be done. So when you have those changes made, what you're looking at right now on the expenditure side of the budget is an 8.6% increase. And again, we'll be working on that over the next several days and over vacation so that when we come back together with you in a workshop, we'll get closer to a final budget that's ready to go before the council. And as you all know, we go before the council on April 29th. I do want to talk a little bit about revenues, and if you notice, the revenue side of this is not listed here, so there's no, there's no local impact to present and discuss at this point in time. But as you know, each year, projecting revenues presents a significant challenge. You know we've received the initial E D 279 subsidy report and C T E funding report in February. While we have those reports, the figures may be amended as the legislative session continues. I've heard nothing with regard to the K-12 funding lines being changed, but we have heard of one proposal that would increase the level of state support for C T E by approximately $26,000 for Ellsworth. And again, there's still a long ways to go with a legislative session. The other thing that makes it very difficult to project our revenues are tuition students. Both Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Bowles have completed their spring recruiting visits to all of our sending high schools. We're getting closer on numbers for students that are going to attend Ellsworth High School. I spoke with Mr. Clifford earlier today, but we're not quite yet to the point where it's solid. With Mrs. Bowles, you heard her talking about the applications. They're still processing applications for H C T C, and it won't be until those applications are processed that we'll have some solid numbers. We anticipate having that by the end of April vacation. The other thing that compounds it with C T E, as we've talked about in budget workshops and at these meetings before, the model for funding career and technical education has changed. No longer does the Ellsworth School Department charge tuition for students coming from other communities to H C T C. We're able to charge an assessment, which is a difference from the approved budget and the subsidy. The other place, and we've talked about this since year one of the new Ellsworth School Department, is the fund balance. Each year, we have to make a determination of the level of existing fund balance to apply against proposed expenditures as a means of reducing the level of support requested from our citizens. We also need to take a look at the existing fund balance as a source of creating some dedicated reserve accounts for capital maintenance. We talked about that with the roof project at Ellsworth High School. Our food service program because we have many pieces of equipment that are reaching the end of their useful life. Impala acknowledged they don't make them like they used to. But also for special education, you know, if you've looked at one of our neighboring communities where a significant rise in unanticipated special education costs is wreaking havoc with their budget process, we also need to take a look at our existing fund balance and determine if we want to create a special education reserve. So those are some of the challenges that still remain. So with that brief overview of what we've been doing with the expenditure side and that information on revenues, any questions?
I have one, either to Mr. Higgins or Mr. Clifford, or both. Are we still looking at approximately the same number of potential freshmen and the same increase in staff that we had been talking about before?
Right now, the budget still includes, with the exception of the math-intervention position, it still includes four new teachers. Again, we predicated that on a projected figure of between 155 and 160. It's a little bit lower than that now. We're looking at 114 or 115 resident students, and at last count today, Mr. Clifford, didn't we say 39 or 40 tuition students? So we're, we're close, we're close. But that's one of those things we're going to have to flesh out as we move forward. And what I've asked Mr. Clifford to do is take a look at not just the freshman academy piece of that, because that's one of the critical pieces of that staffing level, but also what are the electives that we may be able to restore the offerings? And I knew that was something that you were going to ask, so I was anticipating.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Calendar and announcements, the meeting schedule. School Board Workshop, April 23rd, 2019, Yalesworth School Department Conference Room at 6:00 P. M. And the next school board meeting, Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, City Hall, Council Chamber, 6:30 P. M. And item L is adjournment.
Having no additional business, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?